That's what we want.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, October 11th, 2016. Order is six thirty. I'll ask everyone to stand for dedication from Pastor Joan Meyer, Peace United Church of Christ. And please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pass the hour.
Aye, Mr. Grand. Plaid our heads, but look our hearts to the Lord. Gracious God, be coming for you this night and seek your wisdom, most of all. May your spirit truly of wisdom gather in this place with us. May it touch all of our officials that are gathered here and all of us, that as we are about the business of this great town of Maryville, Indiana, that we will be kind and generous and thoughtful with one another. We ask your blessings upon all of our first responders, Lord God. Keep them safe this night, we pray, in Jesus' name. And all present persons, amen.
Amen.
We ask for a moment of silence for Deanna Vanyo, retired Maryville firefighter who passed away. Amen.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Grinzen.
I'll get everybody right this time.
Maybe.
Span.
Here.
Mr. Patel. Mencheck. Uzleak.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Edet.
Here.
Lamarka.
Here.
And Hardaway.
Six present, we have a quorum, petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remontations in communications, Mr. Spire.
I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you. Consent agenda, council payable register voucher approval for October 11th, 2016, along with approval of town council meeting minutes from September 27th.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, taken by Councilwoman Uzleak, that we approve the accounts payable register voucher for October 11th, along with the town council meeting minutes from September 26th. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Standing committees, budget and finance, Councilman Pettit.
I have no report, Mr. President.
Public works, Councilman Span.
I don't have anything to add to anything.
Um, I just have one quick item, and of course, if you haven't received it yet, the town newsletter's out, and on the front page is all the information dealing with the fall leaf pickup program. So please take, take a chance to read it. The program starts this coming Monday, and will run through the end of November.
I have one thing. Uh, Matt and I were out on Fifty-third and Pierce this afternoon, and behind their houses, it's by the cul-de-sac, Fifty-third Court, West Fifty-third Court.
Okay, yeah.
All right. There's on Fifty-third, Fifty-third and Block of Pierce, there's rural houses there, and it looks like the sanitary district went through behind these houses between the, the property line and the easement, and they dug like a little trench, and they, they laid a pipe there, and they were supposed to come back and fill it all in, and refurbish the backyards. Hasn't happened yet. Can you contact somebody from GSD and find out what their intentions are?
Okay, will do.
Thank you. Uh, anything else on the public works?
Council affairs, Councilwoman Uzleak.
No report.
Personnel policy, employee benefits, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Public safety, Councilwoman Uzleak.
Um, just the signs going to be posted around Kaiser Ditch, and we're waiting for them. Matt has informed me that he gave them to you. I believe. Or the office. Okay, because on Hendrick Street, we have people dumping grass.
Get a phone next to...
What mine?
Hey, what's mine?
Either, either Roxanne or I.
So anyway, uh, we're there dumping grass, the neighbors are complaining on the one side, maybe you could check into it. Seventy-fifth and Seventy-fourth and Hendricks in Maryville. You have to go to the back where Kaiser Ditch.
Right.
Okay, good.
Ask them to get some license plate numbers. If they see you. That's the only way you can stop that. You gotta have some, you get some license.
License plate numbers, but their cars are sitting right in the driveway.
Or take some pictures of them.
Okay. And I just want to remind everybody when it comes to Kaiser Ditch, that's not Maryville's property, it's the county's. So if it's something in the ditch, you need to call county. It's not Maryville's responsibility, and nor should we be touching anything that's in the ditch.
Well, we won't touch anything, but at the same time, we, we don't, we want to catch the call for its foot.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying, I just remember the conversation that took place about somebody going in there and taking stuff out of the ditch, and I was like, that's a big no-no.
Well, somebody has to clean it, you know what?
You gotta call.
It's Maryville neighbors.
You gotta call county.
Well, you know what? I didn't even realize that it went back to the county. It used to be with the town. Well, when did it go back with the county?
And if you call Bill Lemerson, he'll be out there that day.
Okay.
But you get, need to call him.
All right.
If there's anything that happens, any kind of damage, or anything that needs to be cleaned up, or...
He's pretty good.
He needs to be aware of it, because it's their responsibility.
Were you aware of that, Matt?
Yeah, it's always been a regulated drain, seventy-five foot drainage, it's been from the top of the bank.
Oh, okay. But it seems like we've been doing the upkeep on it, huh?
No, we haven't.
No?
We do Taney Ditch.
The Taney?
Yeah, Taney Ditch is the one that runs between the houses. Just to the, uh, to the west of that is Kaiser Ditch. They run parallel.
Oh, I see. Okay, I know what you're talking about now.
They converge at Seventy-third and go across to the cemetery from there.
Okay, very good.
Okay. Anything else on the public safety?
No, that's it.
Arch and Rec, uh, Councilwoman Lamarka.
Um, I'd like to give it to Jen.
Um, I have no report this evening, unless anybody has any questions.
I'd, I'd like to thank you for the, uh, physically disabled swing that you put in in my part. I got a text the other day from a lady, she had her daughter in there.
Great.
Showing, letting her swing, and she was very appreciative of that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, environmental affairs, Councilwoman Baron.
I don't have anything. Uh, Mr. Mike, do you have anything?
No report at this time.
Elections and public relations, Councilwoman Lamarka.
No report.
Economic development, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Uh, utility liaison, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Abandoned properties, Councilman Hardaway. Bruce, one quick thing, what about the proposal for, uh, boardups?
Um, our code enforcement officer and our, our building inspector were handling that.
Okay.
So let me follow up with them tomorrow. I know, I, I know we've already received one.
Okay. That's good. I just wanted to just keep it in front of us.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. President, just real quick, uh, we're coming up on the third Friday. Uh, Bruce and Sheila, uh, remind Vicki that on October twenty-first, that structure, Seventy-two hundred Broadway, better come down, because I don't want to have to take a lunch hour to come down here and advise Mr. Geekus what needs to be done. Am I clear? He had twenty-first of October, I'm not going to get another call from Wally Cook across the street complaining it looks like an eyesore. Okay, John?
I hear you.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else on their abandoned buildings? Uh, that concludes, uh, committee reports, general orders, first reading ordinance, ordinance number sixteen dash thirty. Ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the general fund for the year 2016 not included in current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Uzleak, that we approve ordinance sixteen dash thirty on first reading. Is there any discussion? All in favor, uh, roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Uzleak.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Edet.
Yes.
Lamarka.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. That concludes first reading ordinance says, second reading ordinance says, ordinance sixteen dash twenty-nine. Is this the one, which one are we supposed to table, Bruce? Is this the one?
Uh, no, I think, I think the one that is off face, it, it, yeah, it's not on here.
All right. Ordinance sixteen dash twenty-nine, B, it ordained, resolved by the Town of Maryville that for the expenses of Maryville Civil Town for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty seventeen, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated in ordinance set apart out of the general funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the, the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Maryville Civil Town, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Town of Maryville.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Uzleak, that we approve ordinance sixteen dash twenty-nine on second reading, and is there any discussion? And because this is a second reading ordinance, at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Any public comment on ordinance sixteen dash twenty-nine? Any public comment? Any public comment? Roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Uzleak.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Edet.
Yes.
Lamarka.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. That concludes second reading ordinance says, resolutions, resolution sixteen dash thirty, resolution Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies within the 2016 general fund, court probation and record perpetuation of the Town Court of Maryville.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Uzleak, that we approve resolution sixteen dash thirty. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes resolutions, BZA action, uh, case number Z three-six E ten dash zero-nine-one-six. Petitioner is Lisa Patouska. The owner is Russell Cone Management, request special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six for the, the proposed dog training service located at forty-eighty-eight West Eighty-second Court. It's owned as M One Limited Industrial.
Hi. Hello, I'm Lisa Pataska, how are you?
Any, any questions?
No questions.
Could you come to my neighborhood? I got a couple neighbors don't know how to get their dogs off the grass.
Where is that actually located, on Eighty-second Court?
Um, there is a, uh, if you come down to Whitcomb, right behind the Lexus dealership off of Whitcomb and Hope Valley Thirty, there's a business park, so I'm right off of it.
BRS Industrial Park?
Yes, that's correct.
So you're talking Whitcomb on the back road?
I'm sorry?
Whitcomb Street all the way through?
Yeah, there's Whitcomb, and then I'm tucked back into that area. I don't see a problem with it. You won't be doing any boarding, will you? No, no.
Motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Span, that we approve case number Z three-six E ten dash zero-nine-one-six. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, welcome. Uh, case number Z three-seven E one-one dash zero-nine-one-six. Uh, petitioner is Chester Lapierre, owner is Chester Lapierre, special exception approval from section twenty-one dash one thirty-six for an indoor car wash and detailing facility, eighty-four fifty Whitcomb, M One Limited Industrial.
Mr. President, um, this is in Councilwoman Baron's ward, but I'm looking at the conditions. Uh, Sheila.
It's, he, yeah, he got the letter.
He's got the letter from I H C D?
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Buscemi, we can put conditions on this. I don't know if we want to stipulate, since this says indoor, there's no outside storage of, of vehicles. Do we, was that brought up at the BZA, Sheila?
No, it wasn't.
They didn't discuss parking, or are you going to have over, you know, cars out there, sir?
No.
They'll all be inside? Okay.
You can, the council does have the authority to add, to add any reasonable condition.
Cover the councilwoman for your air.
If it would determine it is.
I definitely want a condition put on.
Add, add that condition that it's inside parking only?
No outside storage, yes.
No outside storage, inside parking, whichever. Okay.
Do we have, can you read the conditions into the record? And I've missed it on the last one, but why do you mind? Mrs. Shai?
Uh, the condition was a, a letter from Independence Hill that he was handling the storm wash, sanitary sewers correctly, and, um, I talked with Lynn from Independence Hill, they sent someone out to the facility. They had someone, someone out in the facility before, um, he had to do some things, and he had to withdraw, so they went back out, and the letter is in the package.
Are you also in the BRS Industrial Park?
Yes.
Is it, he's on that frontage road?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's the last one south along Whitcomb.
Before freight, what, the old freight co?
Yeah, it's actually, it's the last industrial building, just, and then you got the little wetland there, which I want to warn you about, uh, making sure that you wash out all your vehicles inside. We have had a, um, incident in the past there with the owner when they were building, uh, this particular, um, facility, and, uh, we had to cite them, but just be mindful that there's a wetland just south of you there.
Sure. Matt, do we need to put that as a condition?
I don't think so. If we catch up, we'll, you know, we'll enforce it.
And this is an existing building, Matt? Yeah, okay, there it is.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Anything else, Mrs. Shai? Any other conditions?
No. Inside parking of vehicles, no.
This petitioner only, this location only?
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
There.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
So we know who we?
Yeah.
Who we're dealing with.
How many employees are you employing?
Uh, three or four. Just three, maybe four sometime if I get a little busy.
Any other discussion?
Now, go ahead and make the motion to approve with there not being any outside storage, that everything is to be stored inside.
And the other condition from the BZA?
And, and the other conditions there.
Second, Mr. President.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve case number Z three-seven E one-one dash zero-nine-one-six. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, welcome.
Good luck. Chester.
Case number Z three-eight E one-two dash zero-nine-one-six. Petitioner is Kai Wall Park. Uh, the owner is Contita Yee. Request special exception approval from section twelve dash one thirty-six for proposed massage parlor and spa, forty-five West Eightieth Place, C three highway commercial.
Good evening, uh, members of the council, my name is Corinne Bishop, and I'm here on behalf of Ms. Park, the Natural Element Spa Corporation.
Do, uh, conditions, please?
Well, um, only certified massage therapist to work in the facility. Name and certificates will be kept within the Town of Maryville, with the Town of Maryville business license, and at this time, they only have one therapist, and they're going to have approximately one to three employees at this location. The hours are going to be Monday through Saturday from nine AM to nine PM.
Edet, nothing else at this location only?
Yeah, this petition.
At this, for this petition only, at this location only, for this use only, yes.
Any other questions from the council?
Uh, what unit is this on, on the north side of Eightieth, correct?
It's, what is, forty-nine West Eightieth Place, forty-nine.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
It's on the south side, Bruce?
Yeah. It would be the south side.
So that's not in the fourth ward, is it?
No, that's why I was trying to get a handle on R G, that's my, I'm trying to figure out which unit are your, your next to High Dance, or down?
One down.
One down for High Dance? Okay.
Oh, okay.
I think they have several empty units there.
Yeah.
Yes, they do.
Have for a while.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, seeing none, Mr. President, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve, uh, Z thirty-eight E twelve dash oh-nine-one-six with the condash, conditions that were handed out by the BZA.
Second. Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Span, that we approve, uh, case number Z three-eight E one-two dash zero-nine-one-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, welcome.
Thank you. Good luck. Good luck.
Case number Z four-zero E one-three dash zero-nine-one-six. Uh, petitioner Cedric Collins, the owner is Santiago Vega, request special exception, approve, approval from section twenty-one dash six for the proposed dine-in restaurant located at fifty-five twenty-four Broadway, uh, C two community commercial. Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, any, the, uh, conditions?
Oh, okay, this petitioner is requesting special exception approval for a dine-in restaurant located at fifty-five twenty-four Broadway. Petitioner has been issued a business license for carryout only at this location, and is now seeking approval for the dine-in restaurant. For this petitioner only at this location only, for this use only.
Any questions? Haven't you had barbecue place before?
Yes, sir.
On fifty, by the park?
Yes.
Oh, I've had that barbecue.
Fifty-seven, haven't you? Yeah.
Well, I'll be back.
This is actually our, our fourth location, the second one in Maryville, uh, a little bit bigger than before, because we didn't have a dine-in, so we just want to utilize the building to its fullest, uh, capacity.
What will be your operating hours?
Well, our operating hours right now are eleven AM to nine PM, and to ten PM on Fridays and Saturdays.
Oh, okay.
Rich, this is in your ward, correct?
Right.
Which building is this on Broadway?
It, it used to be the old Peppy's, I think it was. Right, right next, right next to, uh, Simply Seafood or Simply Shrimp.
Oh, okay, all that, that darker brown brick, kinda?
Right. It used to be like an old, old church's building, I think it went time.
Okay.
It used to, it's, it's been a lot of things.
Okay, I know which one you mean, yeah. I know which one you mean, that's, yeah.
Who owns the building?
Uh, Santiago Vega.
The one who owns the Peppy on.
He owns Peppy's on Sixty-first.
Oh, Santiago, yeah.
Peppy's is Albo.
Right.
Any other discussion?
You have any comments, Rich? This is your ward, you have any?
I'm good.
They look nice, I drove by today.
Motion to approve, Mr. President, with the conditions outlined by the BZA.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Lamarka, that we approve case number Z four-zero E one-three dash zero-nine-one-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, welcome.
Thank you. Good luck.
Welcome to town.
Uh, case number Z four-one E nine dash zero-nine-one-six. Petitioner Larry in Torona Tillman, owner Contita Yee, uh, requesting special exception approval for a ministry center, forty-nine West Eightieth Place, C three highway commercial. Good evening.
Good evening, how you all doing?
Good.
Hello.
Questions?
Yes, is this like a church?
A ministry center. We'll be providing, uh, ministry services, uh, marital counseling, pre-marital counseling, and life skill classes, and we do have a Bible study that we will be doing on Wednesday night, and we will be having a service on Sunday morning.
Oh, okay.
So what is the church?
Big park.
It is a church.
Yes, it's a ministry center, yes.
Uh, anything else? Uh, conditions?
Um, do you want me to read the?
I can hear you.
You want me to read the?
Yes.
Okay. The petitioner is requesting special exception approval for a proposed ministry center known as New Destiny Ministries, to be located at forty-nine West Eightieth Place, in the C three commercial zoning district. The proposed ministry center will have an office and a place for fellowship. The church has approximately eight members. Office hours will be weekdays, five PM to nine PM, and on Sundays, nine AM to three PM for worship services. Um, Wednesdays, six PM to eight PM for Bible study. All other days are optional for special, um, events such as school supplies giveaway and job skill information. The, um, condition that the, uh, border zoning appeals put on it was that the fire inspector should, uh, visit, and he did, and his report is that, um, to give an occupancy load, they were concerned about how many people, and also, he did, he did his entire inspection, and he put, he indicated some other things that needed to be done that, uh, before they could, um, occupy the spot. For this petition only, at this location only, for this use only.
Have those issues been addressed?
Um, they're going, they, well, they're going to have to get all of the, the battery smoke detector repaired, the rear exits, and, um, get the, um, fire extinguishers done before, um, they can occupy the building, is what, what, what he said in his report. But the BZA did send him out there to do the occupancy, to find out what's the load, so they would know that once they, they grow into ninety or more, that they could not be in that building anymore. And that is the, the last building on the.
On that end? Yeah, okay. Okay.
So you have seven members right now?
Correct.
And you do anticipate getting more, probably? Okay. But you can't go over ninety?
Yes, we have to.
Okay, just so you know.
President, I make a motion, we approve Z forty-one E nine dash oh-nine-one-six.
Second. Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Span, that we approve case number Z four-one E nine dash zero-nine-one-six. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, that concludes BZA action, uh, in the old business. Any new business? I have one thing on the new business next, well, tomorrow I will be going to the Hobart Chamber, sit on their, uh, panel to discuss, uh, communities working together. And next week, Vicki's going to abandoned, uh, vacant and abandoned building, uh, workshop down in Indianapolis, and she has been asked to sit on the panel for that on Tuesday. So I will be, I'll go down Tuesday morning to support her for that. Uh, anything else on the new business? At this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment. Uh, if there's any public comment, we ask that you come, state your name, your address, if there's any public comment, we ask that you come, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay. Good evening. Reverend Joan Meyer, um, five nine seven zero Arthur Street, Maryville, Indiana, Minister of East United Church of Christ, one zero zero one West Seventy-third Avenue. I just kind of wanted to come and give an update about the First Responders Prayer Breakfast, if I could do that for a few moments. And I have some handouts for the council. Um, I just want to let you know, things are moving along, you know, fairly well. Um, I understand that the Town Hall and Trinity Memorial Lutheran both have information out about the First Responders event on October twenty-ninth. Um, I am taking flyers out in the community and I have table sponsorships that I'm taking out. I'm trying to get a hundred dollar table sponsorships for this event and all that money will go for the best. Okay? Um, the choir, Maryville High School will be involved. They're going to sing. Um, and we are working on the, the, the program, Reverend Boss Chauvin and I. So Reverend Hart, I mean, uh, Mr. Hardaway, I had asked you if you would be willing to speak at this event. Um, I, I don't know if you want to talk to me about that afterwards. And I asked both of the chiefs, but they're not here tonight. Um, so if I could speak to you maybe for a moment afterwards to find out about that, if you're willing to do that. Okay? Um, I took a letter to Representative Visklosky to see if he might join us. I have not heard yet, but we'll check back on that. And, uh, I took information to Chamber of Commerce. Um, I gave them a flyer, but they said it cannot go on their network unless the Town of Maryville Administration, um, okays for that. And I guess there's a fee that's, uh, included with that. So, um, you know, because you're a member, but she said, she told me there would be a fee. So I just wanted to let you know that, that they weren't openly willing to put it on their, their network for information. So I don't know how that works within the town, but I wanted to share that with you. Um...
Excuse me, I'm confused.
Okay.
You're saying the town would not put it on their?
No, 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 the Chamber of Commerce. I went to Crossroads.
Oh, sorry.
To Chamber of Commerce to ask them.
That's right.
Yeah, if they would put it on, in their network and they said it has to, okay. Do you understand? Okay. And they said there was a fee included. I'd have to talk to administration to see if they were willing to do that. So I just, I'm bringing that to your attention.
Yeah, do you have a flyer?
I do. I'm gonna, I'm going to pass these out. This is.
I'll talk to them tomorrow.
And, um, Brianna, did you want help? Come on. This is my granddaughter, Brianna Noble, and she's a student at MIS. So she's a Maryville school student. It's council members.
Put it up at the park department.
Thank you. Thank you, Brianna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So you'll see there's the two, the flyer, the, um, sponsorship sheet, my business card and a ticket. I hope you all can attend this event. If you can't, I would ask you to share that ticket. We're trying to get as many people to attend this first year event, um, that we're going to continue to do every year. Next year, it's for the fire department. We're going to help them. But we want to try to raise as much money as we can for the best, for the police officers. And I've spoken with, uh, Bill from FOPA, so he's aware of that. Okay? All right?
Thank you.
Rich, do you want me to, uh, off of this flyer, I can have artwork designed. Do you want to take any space we have on, on the digital billboards?
Yeah.
For the, on the town slot?
That'll be great.
I'm just telling guys at Lamar, we'll, if we've got openings, we'll bump, uh, Gino and his passport sales. Right?
That's fine.
No, that'll, that'll be great. That, did you hear that? We're going to put it on the big billboard for Lamar.
Oh, thank you. I just want to say one more thing. Thank you very much for your donation that you made. That's a big help as we start out on this new venture. Thank you.
Appreciate all that you, uh, any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Announcements. Uh, town vehicle auction, October twelfth, twenty sixteen, starting at eleven AM, to be held in front of the Town Hall parking lot. Uh, plan commission meeting, October eighteenth, twenty sixteen, at six thirty PM. Town council workshop, October nineteenth, twenty sixteen, at six PM. Uh, environmental resource committee meeting, October twentieth, twenty sixteen, at two PM. The next town council meeting will be October the twenty-fifth at six thirty PM. And note now that the first meeting in November, uh, election day is, we will meet on November the ninth.
Okay.
Wednesday.
Okay, we talked about plan commission, having to move plan commission, but it's actually the first, it's the calendar, it's the first Monday after the first, first Tuesday after the first Monday. So we'll have our regular scheduled workshop then on that, that Tuesday.
Right.
The first, right, okay.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're done.[1778.32]